Good evening, everyone. The time is now five twenty-seven. All mics are hot and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Is this a short night, guys? Not controversy?
I believe it. Yeah, it could be worse than that. Yeah, it hurts today, but. I think about forty-five seconds. Yeah, it could be sitting awhile. Where do we get these new computers, man? This is fancy. Last week or anything?
Careful when you jump around.
No, I'm good. That's right. I need help.
No, it's still good. I'm glad to bring Nancy Mostyn up.
Oh.
I don't know. I'm not getting up to the chair. Out of respect. Respect.
Sure, that's not the word. Out of stubborn.
I understand. Having the appointed time of five-thirty arrived, I'd like to call the Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five Committee of the Hold Order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Yes, sir. Alderman Cox.
Hold on, I'm not on. Hello.
Hello, hello.
All right.
Mr. Tony. Mr. Tony.
One moment, we'll reboot the system. It sounds great up here, but we'll reboot it one moment.
Williams. Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, how do the mics sound?
The mics are on now. Great. Thank you. All right, I would accept the motion for approval of the March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five committee meeting minutes.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Treasurer, do we have a treasurer's report? Mr. Assistant Treasurer?
There's no report.
No report. All right, thank you. We have a presentation tonight. CWLP.
Mr. Chairman, we also have three speakers that have signed up for this presentation only.
Okay, I'll let you let me know who they are. Thank you. All right, Doug.
So we have a, here's our agenda here. One thing that I want to talk about just real quick that you'll be seeing soon is an ordinance basically for twenty-five megawatts of solar. It's taking a little time to get through all the terms and conditions with the company and come to something that we think we can agree to, but we're pretty close with that now. So Scott's been working on that and hopefully we'll have that here really soon. So that'll be a good thing for everybody to see. A quick update on the carbon capture large pilot project. They expect to begin operation beginning of May. Remember, this is just the catch and release to kind of prove the technology. You know, there is no storage or anything like that involved with this. And then, so that's, that's good to see. The Carbon Safe Grant is where basically it's the geological collection of data. Which is kind of south of Springfield for the University of Illinois. They have the two D seismic data that's going to start probably like beginning of summer. And then they're going to drill the well late summer, early fall timeframe. And they're going to cap that once they're done. Again, this is just research, did not injecting or capturing or storing CO2. Another update is on the Integrated Resource Plan. We do have kind of a problem right now. The state legislation has pending, actually, you know, pending legislation that requires municipalities to complete IRPs. It's being kind of pushed by the Sierra Club at the state level. And it's got some components to it that affect how things are to be done. And so the new legislation really goes beyond what the CJA, the Clean Energy Jobs Act in twenty-twenty-one. It requires IRPs every three years for municipal and cooperative electric utilities only. It doesn't include investor owns, which really are a much larger impact on our state. As it's filed, it gives oversight of generation and resource planning kind of basically to the Illinois Power Agency. It mandates prescriptive IRPs with renewable portfolio standards like an RPS. Which that kind of, what that means is that you have to buy so much renewables at a certain, by a certain date. You know, until you get to a hundred percent. Which that, that can actually drive up prices more than what, you know, we've been able to accomplish with, with, you know, our rates and our planning that we've done so far. Because the vendors know that you have to buy this by a certain date, so it kind of changes the game on that. It also places mandates on who can perform IRPs and how the public participation is conducted. Actually, it removes the local control for the, the public participation from, from, from all of us to the Illinois Power Agency. Which to me, that's not really good for our community. You know, as we've done in our last IRP, we had a lot of public engagement with that process and we don't really like to see that be altered in that fashion. So the bill, as it's introduced, really is unnecessary. It adds risks and costs and it gives up that local control. But the main point here is that we have to really kind of put things on hold to see, to make sure that whatever we do do is going to meet the requirements of the legislation as it's passed and if it's passed this session. So now on to the main part of the, of the presentation for AMI meters. And it's something that we've been, you know, wanting to pursue for some time now with this, this technology. But, you know, funding has always been a problem in the past, but, but no, no longer. And I think, you know, from our standpoint, we're excited to see, you know, us, you know, going to ready to implement this technology to improve our customers' experience. So I want to turn it over to Scott Rogers, the Electric Division Manager, to go over the benefits of implementing AMIs and a timeline.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks, Alders. So first of all, what is AMI? I know we've talked about it a little bit. So just to give you a little update or a little background of what AMIs are. There, it's an advanced metering infrastructure, so we will be able to collect real-time data on all of our meters. This will ensure billing accuracy, share revenue accuracy on our side. Improve customer engagement and efficiency and supports the smart grid applications. And I'll get into a little more detail on those now. So on improved billing, it eliminates manual meter reads and meter reading errors from manual reads or from remote reads that we get now that we do not get full information on. Operational efficiency, remote meter reading reduces field visits. So with the AMI system for cuts and reconnects, we can do it from a remote terminal. We don't have to roll a truck and a, and a crew out there to do that. The can't read it. Oh, the demand responses. So allows us for pricing, billing and, and come up with different plans for customers by enabling us to see what their usage is and what times of day, what the customers are doing on their own and see if we can incentivize something different there. Provides real-time insight to be able to do that, reduces revenue, or I'm sorry, reduces theft and unbilled. Because we'll be able to manage the meters. If somebody does try to reconnect to a meter, we'll know it immediately because we'll see the meter come back on. And outage management, one of the things during deration is one of the big issues we have is outage management on our public-facing outage map. The problem with that was it's an algorithm. This will give us real time. We'll know exactly what meters are on or off and it'll give us much, much better accuracy on our outage maps. One of the, one of the things we got to make sure we protect, this will be all over the air. So there's privacy concerns, protecting meter, meter data from cybersecurity threats. Preventing unauthorized access to accounts and all these meet, make sure we meet the NERC, ANSI and IAC standards for, for meters. Some of the benefits for customers, real-time usage monitoring can reduce their energy costs, greater transparency. So online portal for the, for the customers, they will be able to see, currently if you go to my CWLP, you just see a monthly graph. This will have actual real-time data. You can actually see over a period of time what your usage is at certain times of the day. Flexible billing options, this will have a ability, we can pay to, pay to use. So you could put fifty dollars on a card and once you run out of fifty dollars, the meter automatically shuts off. Also going to time of use rates, we, we can be able to implement that and try to help incentivize customers to conserve energy. And again, fastage outage restoration, being able to know where the outages are. By knowing what meters are off, we would be able to ease, more easily isolate that outage and determine where that is. So upgrading the meters, what do we currently have? All the existing electric meters, which is a little over seventy thousand, are considered AMR meters, which are automatic meter reads. It's one-way communication currently. All we get is a, is a signal back from the meters with what the current reading is. And there's, they're not capable of receiving commands or updates remotely. With the new system, we'll be able to actually go in and program those meters from an office or the desk. We wouldn't have to go out in the field to do that. Transition to meters be funded by savings of the twenty-twenty-five bonding refinance. It's about twelve million dollars a year, so that's what we're, we're funding all this with. The new installed system will excuse me, the new system will also be capable of reading electric meters as they transition to AMI. There are some what they call ERTs out there now. Depending on the system we go with, we might be able to pick them up, we might not. It just depends.
Water meters, you mean?
Sorry, water. Thanks, Doug. The water meters. We will be able to read all electric meters, I hope.
Yeah.
And in a quick timeline, so currently we've narrowed the thirteen submitted down to four proposals. The committee's reviewed, currently the committee is reviewing the final four proposals as the subject matter experts in their field, in their area that they're going to have to deal with. So hopefully by the end of April, or middle of April, we'll have that done. We'll get an ordinance ready sometime in May. And I would expect to have an ordinance to you, in front of you for approval for the final vendor in early June. Implementation schedule, it's about a little over, almost three years, just short of three years to get this completed. So there's, when, the first thing we got to do is network planning. So they will have to design the network to make sure they can cover all of our meters. We will give them a map of all of our meters with, with coordinates on it. They will lay out their network, what they're going to do to, to cover the entire city and all of our meters. Kind of in parallel with that, we'll start with the software configuration to make sure it interfaces with our outage map. Make sure it interfaces with our online mapping that we have internally and also make sure it interfaces with our customer billing accounts. Then the meter installations itself, it's about twenty-seven months and so we're hoping to be done May of twenty-eight. Is when we're looking at trying to be done with this. It's a, it's a long process. Once, the problem with installing meters, you can't just go out and just start installing meters because of billing cycles. So we will work, they've, all these companies have done this all over the country already. So we will work with them on our billing cycles and still do, they'll do it in stages around all the billing cycles. That's all we got.
All right, we've got a few Aldermen, Alderwomen that would like to talk. Mr. Gregory, Alderman Gregory, you're up first.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate you. So Scott, just for informational purposes, how many total meters do we got in the city that we're?
There's a little over seventy thousand.
Okay, yeah, that's in the table. Okay, so I just want to make sure that with this particular project, I'm happy to see this. I think this is going to help us do some things and it's nice, but I want to make sure that my particular ward is not left out. Like, like we have been with, you know, some other things in the past that probably predate you. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, I know we got some older infrastructure, we got older trees over there that always mess some things up. You know, I want to make sure that our inner city is thought about first to really deploy a lot of this, you know, and, and so therefore we don't get so far down the line, we stop or whatever happens and then, you know, nothing, nothing's over in the center of town.
Yeah, and it's going to depend upon the billing cycles is really what's going to drive it. So and part of that will be like depending where the billing cycles fall out. We might only get part of them done before the billing cycle comes due, then we got to stop. Because we, we don't want to be pulling meters and putting new meters in the middle of a billing cycle.
I get it. I get it.
So yeah, it'll be, I haven't, I don't, we haven't gotten into those details with them yet. We still have the vendor selected. But that'll be something we'll be working through with them is how they're going to do that and what stages.
Okay. Every account will be converted to an AMI though.
Yeah, every, we will replace.
No one's left behind.
Yeah.
I, I know, I'm just more so, so saying I've, you don't see stranger things happen. And, and just on the, the work part of it, this, this work's going to be completed by electricians, I would assume.
The vendor, yes. So the, I'm not sure who the network would be completed by, but I know the meters would be by electricians.
Okay, I just, and I only mentioned that going forth, long-term project, you know, this, this thing looks like it's going out to twenty-twenty-eight. So we got a lot of opportunity to, to train up some folks and push that, you know, with, with our electricians. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Scott, when it comes to the AMRs, what's the life expectancy of these, you know, the readers? I mean, we got seventy thousand.
The new ones?
The new ones you're going to install, by the time you put in the, the first group, you know, what's it, what's it?
They're, they're expected twenty-year life.
Twenty-year life. And so if we do decide to do it with the water meters, do we go back out for bid?
We'll have to, yes.
Okay, because my understanding is some of these automatic readers that we have on our system right now are outdated. And I know that we've talked about installing meters elsewhere, but I mean, if they're outdated and we keep installing and
Electric or water?
Well, I'm going, I'm talking water right now and I know it's, it's down the road, but I think we had people, a woman come up last week, talk about having a leak. And you, you don't see anything until you get your bill. And you know, and if you get your, if you, if we get these meters on there, we can tell right away what's, what's happening. And, and I think that you kill two birds with one stone, you know, instead of pushing it and pushing it and pushing it. We're doing all this work. We raised rates. We were doing all this work with our water system. But we're kind of skipping the, I think, one of the biggest, biggest things that can, can really help us and help our customers.
I'll answer part of that and I'll let Doug answer the other part. So the first part is, we did go out, in, in this RFP, it includes water meters. And I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I'm going to, the water meters were significantly more expensive for installation. Primarily because you can walk up to an electric meter, you pull it out, you put a new one in. Water meters, you got to get down in the pit.
And
Disconnect it.
Yeah, exactly.
Put a new one in.
Yeah, with this, with this changing out, the, the meters and the lines and, and this, right now, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's maybe it's water under the bridge. But I mean, having the foresight and saying, hey, we might as well do it while we're there. I mean, money.
But the intent going forward after this network's installed is then to start, instead of installing AMRs going forward, we switch to installing, you know, the AMIs.
Yeah, yes.
And then if we can figure out how to fund it, you know, I mean, because obviously you can raise rates to fund it, but the, the goal, we tried not to raise rates to keep going forward with it.
And again, I, I wish Todd was here so we can, we can talk it, and I know this has nothing to do with, with our water. But I mean, we've, we've talked about updates and seeing where we're at and, and the increase and are we, are we making money? I know he said we weren't selling the water. We weren't, you know, the revenue's down and, but that's not what we said when we, we raised the rates. So that's why I wish Todd was here and we could, we could ask questions, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. To this IRP and this pending legislation, did, was municipalities contacted to put everything on hold? Or are we just deciding that as our own city?
You know, we were requested to put it on hold. It's, it's a matter of, you know, we don't know how the legislation is going to fall out with this. So if they basically say that we have to use only a prescribed list that the Illinois Power Agency approves, then they could invalidate our IRP. We don't want to do that. We don't want to go and spend money with a vendor on an IRP that gets invalidated if that's the way the law gets passed.
Well, so my, my issue is daily, when sessions end, there's pending legislation that impacts our lives in all kinds of areas and all kinds of ways. And it's usually you keep working until the new effective date of the new legislation becomes law and then you make your adjustments. In this case, you kind of hit on it. So it's because of cost and money that you feel we should just hold up and wait and see what's going to happen this legislative session.
Yeah, I would say it's cost of money and it's also all the staff time that would go into it that we don't want to waste.
What do you mean by staff time?
Yeah, in, in the session, I mean, we're, you know, it's only a couple of months that we're talking about here, right? I mean, it's, it's, we shouldn't know by the end of May whether this, this legislation passes. So it's not, it's not like we're laying things for a year, but it's just for the session that we need to make sure that we know if this bill is going to pass or not.
Well, you know, I'm just having a little heartburn with not doing anything because there's pending legislation. Because that's the case in our lives every day down there. I feel we should move on like we were doing. And then we make the adjustments based on what they pass and don't pass like any other, other place does.
Yeah, I mean, so if the Illinois Power Agency is basically going to dictate how we're going to do an IRP, there's really no reason to even try to attempt putting an RFP together to go and get a vendor because it could change everything. So again, we don't want to waste the staff's time creating something. It takes them away from all the other jobs that they're working on, such as AMI. It's the same people that we have at TND. We don't have, you know, as, as the, the staffing levels that, you know, the what the Sierra Club's pushing for at the state level here for this legislation assumes that we're like an investor-owned utility where we have a, a division of people that are dedicated to these kinds of activities that we do not. You know, we have a limited amount of staff that are, you know, expected to do all of this type of stuff, you know, across the board. New technologies that we're looking at, you know, and, and developing, you know, an IRP and those kinds of things. So it's, it's, it definitely puts a strain on our staff to move forward with something and then it changes. And then they have to redo everything again. So
You know, so, well, I guess it depends what we're talking about. You're the expert, I'm not. But in, in my view of it, if something was to change, we could get grandfathered in because we already started the process and are doing what we already has on schedule. Or this thing may not pass this session. It might pass two, two sessions in the future. We never know. And that's why I'm arguing, we should stick to our plans and do what we do and then see how they handle us. I mean, they may pass this new legislation saying if the municipality already has such and such, in such and such in place, you're grandfathered in, we won't make you do some of this stuff. I don't know, like you don't know. We don't know how the outcome of the legislation is going to be. But it seems like we're putting on things on hold like we do know. You know, like you said, it, it's much more stringent than the CJA, you know, twenty-one. Today, it may pass, it may not pass. So we really don't know what that's going to look like. And just to put something on hold because there's pending legislation, I can go through a lot of areas and look at a lot of those bills down there that are pending. But that don't mean we just, everything goes on hold until we find out.
And I would say, you know, there's, there's some things that we're kind of working on, you know, like getting the, the right person in place to run the IRP, that kind of stuff like that. So that's, there's certain things that we're kind of moving forward with, but a majority of the work to really say that we're going to have a schedule of what we're going to be doing and that kind of stuff, we're not there yet. And it's going to be a while until we get this legislation done, because that's a game changer.
Okay, I, I'll get back with you directly. I want to talk to some folks down there and see where they at. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, Doug, yeah, don't go away. I just, and thank you, Alderman Williams. I, you brought up one of my first questions, which was really, where were you in the stages of planning for the IRP? It sounds like you were still early stages when this legislation was introduced.
Oh, yeah. I mean, our budget was just passed, so it's not like, you know, we're, we started, once the budget was passed, we started trying to execute, you know, putting somebody in charge. That takes some time to do that because of the things that we're, the way we're doing it. But so we're, we were planning on proceeding that way. And, you know, once we learned more of the details that they're trying to really push hard to get this passed. Now, you know, it could be part of a bigger energy bill. We don't know. And, and, and Alderman, you're right, we don't know how it'll pass. I mean, we don't, could they grandfather? Possibly. That's not how it's written now. You know, we'd like to see a lot of changes. Three, every three years, us dedicating the manpower to do this would be absolutely horrible for our staff. You know, you know, trying to do every five years is monumental, but doing it every three, you know, again, things don't change that fast for us. Investor owns, big, big utilities that have, you know, hundreds of different resource options that they're, that they have control over that have to be, okay, well, this one's going to be retiring in this timeframe, this one's retiring in this timeframe. Or whenever you say retiring, it could be a plant or it could be a contract, whatever, but this timeframe, this one's retiring in this timeframe, or, and when I say retiring, it could be a plant, or it could be a contract, whatever, but they have a lot of choices to make every three years, that's why a lot of them do that, for municipals, it's just, it's, 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 it's over, it's a, it's a burdensome process to do that every three.
But the, so the purchase of the, the, uh, solar, um, contract, that's not tied to any of these concerns, is that right?
No, no, that's something we've been working on for some time now.
Okay, I, I, I would just, um, you know, echo Alderman Williams, you know, we do have a lobbyist for the city, um, I, I do, I hope we're getting regular reports on where this legislation is going.
Yes, and, and, you know, and I use, you know, whatever access I can get through lobbying uh, for, just to get our voice heard, our concerns, um, you know, and it's, I, I'm not saying that there, if the state wants to have some kind of overarching IRP process, not necessarily a bad thing, um, I just don't like the, how prescriptive it is, uh, the way they wanna do it. Uh, and that's really not to say that, you know, it's, it's the Sierra Club that's pushing those, in those ideas, it's, uh, I, I don't think it's as much the, the state legislators right now, but, um, but that could change, you know, uh, to see if it gains momentum or not.
Well, thank you for including the House bill, so we can look at it and see what it looks like also. Um, so then I'm gonna switch over back to the, the meter conversation. So, a- and again, also, Alderman Rockford, great, great points about the water issues too, we see this a lot where people are, you know, talking about their water line breaks, or, you know, a resident with a, a wet spot in their yard that keeps sinking down. So obviously, we'd like to see water meters move towards this more advanced status too. That said, um, you've mentioned, and Scott, thank you, you've mentioned a couple times that real-time pricing concept, which I know you highlighted in the survey that went out to, um, went out to residents. Can you just kind of explain a little more what you're thinking, what the timeline would be for that implementation? Just so people understand, I think, real, what real-time pricing actually means, and what kind of incentives? If you have any in mind yet, what kind of incentives are you looking at connecting to that?
So, the real-time pricing would be a rate adjustment, right, as far as, that's something that would have to come to City Council for a final product, but I think that we would, um, probably try to do some kind of a public input to that process, you know? Um, I don't really have a clear vision in my head just yet for that, but, uh, I think that's something that we, we will be laying out over the next, maybe year, year and a half.
So would this conversation be something that you would include with an IRP, as, as part of?
No, no, it's more of a, it would be more of a looking at the rates and, and saying, okay, this is a rate structure that we could offer with a time of use rate to incentivize people to, to move off of peak.
Right, so, so people can, so basically, like, you can, you can schedule your thermostat, you can schedule, um, washing machines and, and things like that, so that heavier load and heavier demands are done at hours where we're not also looking at peak demands.
And there's, and there's, you know, not getting into too much of the technicalities, but there's a lot of options that we didn't really get into as far as communications between AMI meters and their thermostats and stuff that people can sign up for if they want to.
And these are, and these meters will, I, I just wanna clarify again, I think Alderman Gregory kind of touched on part of this, but there will be no cost to our residents to have their meters replaced.
No.
Okay, because that, that's pretty important, I know people get very nervous about that. Will people be, will, will I as a customer, when you talk about getting those real-time feedback, is there gonna be like a dashboard that we can go to, or an app that we can log into?
So, yes, so part of this is there is a public-facing portal that you will have access to your meter information also. Again, I don't have a lot of details on it, we've seen a lot of examples, and there's a lot of options that you can do or not do, until we see that, I, yes, I know you'll be able to see more data than your monthly number you're seeing today.
Right, okay.
One thing, one thing what I was gonna mention too with, with the time of use rate, part of that is, we need to understand what each rate class is doing, because a time of use rate for a thirty, which is a normal residential versus a commercial versus a senior who's on a senior rate that's home all day, all those loads are gonna be a different profile. So we're gonna need some time to collect some data, to be able to understand those profiles, so that we can try to make an incentive, incentive, to incentivize them to change their habits. Until we know that data, I-
I mean, and there are a lot of examples out there, because I know other, other utilities are doing this, but I, I appreciate that, we wanna make informed options.
Yes, correct.
Um, and so, I, I'm also wondering, um, one of the things, just as part of considerations with this rollout, um, like digital thermostats, which are so much easier to control, I mean, I, I can heat or cool my house from my phone, if there's a way for us to consider offering either free or reduced digital therma- uh, thermostats to, to residents?
We can look at that once we get this implemented, yeah, I think that's-
I'd like to have that, like, if it's a, even if it's on a sliding scale based on, on income, um, you know, or considerations for seniors, and, and then really have that outreach to people to understand how easy it is to control, you know, the HVAC system. But it, it would be nice to have, so not everyone's using, you know, the o- old-school thermostats, if we could also make that part of our considerations.
And there's, there's a lot of different options also, so we're, that is one aspect of it, once, once we're there, or once we're getting close, we were, we were planning on doing that through our Energy Services Office anyway, coming up with what we can do, what's available, what's the best bang for our buck for your buck.
Sure, I appreciate that, I, that's, um, that, that's important, I think just, and, and, but again, just having that consideration, because the more advanced the thermostat, if we can get that into more people's hands and make it, um, something that's easier for them to understand and use, and make it easier to adjust habits, you know, schedule times when your, your heat goes up or down or whatever, that would be, I think, a big advantage for, for a lot of residents. I, I, it changed, I mean, I know, we have a digital thermostat, um, it's new to me-ish, and, and it, it did, it changed our, our habits, and you know, I can, we can schedule things so that I'm very consciously trying to not use during high-peak times, but having that outreach and education to other people, and then making the thermostats not as expensive for them, would be, I think, a really big asset.
Alderwoman, I, I will jump in here, that I know the Energy Services Department, my brother worked there for thirty-something years, thirty-five years or whatever, and I do know that a long time ago, they were pushing this, what do they call it, the setback thermostats? So they, they have been pushing that for, um, man, a long time, where at a certain time of night, when you go to bed, it drops your, your temp back to where it's
Yeah.
a little cold, so, and it saves you a little, it saves you some money, and it's better on our peak, and, and, or like, better on us too, so I know that that has been, been part of their, their thing, so-
We can just kind of make sure that as we roll the, out these advanced meters, that we also consider giving especially lower-income senior citizens more access to those advanced kind of tools to use it to its best advantage, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, that's the end of my questions, Chair.
Alderman Carlson.
And Ralph, I don't think we've had a CWLP energy expert, and since your brother retired, so, all those commercials-
Tell you what, it's been hard to keep that office, uh, the people in there.
Yeah, you know, the longer, no, seriously, um, you know, and Doug, we talked before the meeting, I appreciate that, the longer I think about this, to me, we're doing the prudent decision here. I mean, the number-one job of us as Alder people is protection of, of our citizens and, and protection of the ratepayers, CWLP, so we're, to me, we're doing a prudent decision of waiting a couple months, we're gathering information from what we hear, and, 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 and just like A- Alderwoman Conley said, we're listening to our, our, our city lobbyists of what's going on. I mean, I, I think back to what we got going on with these coal ash ponds, I mean, they continually wanna move the goalposts, and that's what I see here. You know, we're ready to put this, our, uh, this, our IRP out,
Right.
and, and now, you know, we're ready to go, but they say, hey, timeout, wait a minute, which I think is good, I mean, again, we need to protect the ratepayers of the citizens of Springfield, so if we, if we have to wait a couple months, that's great. And so, um, you know, I appreciate, you know, the info on that, and just, you know, we're not trying to slow-walk this thing, I, I don't believe that at all, we're just trying to protect our ratepayers, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Donnellan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, gentlemen, thank you for the presentation this evening. On the AMIs themselves, you mentioned the fact that it will lead to a reduction of, or more automatic reading, will that mean a reduction of staff as well?
Yeah, through attrition, yeah, we, we, you know, we would be looking at that.
Like, how many readers do we have now?
Well, so, currently, let's back up, from the electric side, probably not, because we still, currently, we might lose one. We have one foreman, uh, from the meter readers that can read electric meters. Because they're LA Marcell, only time they go out is if we're having trouble getting a read from one. The rest of the meter readers we have currently are, are water.
Right.
So, from the electric side, it probably wouldn't be a reduction of staff, because we only have one foreman.
But, but this proposal deals with electric, right?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
It, yes, this proposal was electric, like I said earlier, we did get pricing for water,
Right.
and I knew it'd be higher, but I was surprised how much higher the labor cost was for water.
I'm, I'm encouraged by the, uh, I'll say, more efficient, uh, more accurate reading of when there is an outage, people can look and see that's encouraging about this, plus the other benefits, and thank you for that information this evening. I, I did wanna point out, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, that if you are, and I know, I know not everybody is, but if you are presently a CWLP electric customer and a Ameren natural gas customer, you do have presently the ability to get a discounted through Ameren meter, uh, because I think we did it in my office, so-
That's correct, yeah, yeah, you're right.
So, I mean, I, I, I appreciate Alderwoman Conley's comments about looking into ways that we can help that as well, but anyway, there is a program now that you could theoretically, if you have natural gas, take advantage of.
That's correct, okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you Chair, um, Alderman Donnellan just brought up what I was gonna say about the Nest, um, thermostats too, with Ameren, how people can use that program to get up, to come out and have them installed. But after listening to all my colleagues ask you guys multiple questions that may not be answered today, I'm the queen at asking about benchmarks and education, so as we are going through this process, um, the same way you did this presentation today, can you continue to feed us with information for the public as well? Because it helps for transparency, and do you know about when some of those benchmarks will hit?
And I think, well, you'll have, you know, another kind of an update when we do the ordinance, uh, when they select the vendor, so that'd be another chance to talk about it again as well. Um, and then maybe like, you know, an update as they start actually, you know, installing the network, you know, like, hey, this is going on, we're gonna be around town, you know, doing some like stuff, and-
I was gonna ask you like quarterly, but I didn't know if it would be that effective if we kinda did it that way.
Probably not, quarterly's probably not gonna, it's, it'd be the same answer that we give today, you know, except for like this ordinance part, it should be faster than that, but-
As you make progress though, you can come in and give us that information, and I think it's best coming from you all as the experts, and we relaying that one message out that you're talking about, so that's why I'm asking, can you also come in and just do a quick presentation, because I think you guys was very short today, but give a presentation on how we're doing, and going back to Alderman Gregory's point, with figuring out, I think that's very important, to figure out how you're moving forward and what areas you're targeting. What's the priorities? I know you can't get to all seventy thousand, how will that work, Scott? My antennas went up when you said something about the billing cycle, how will that work as well too? And I mean, this is a lot to digest and understand too, so we're, we're up here learning as much as you all are telling us.
And once we get with the vendors, like I said, all, all the vendors that gave us proposals have done this all over the country, it's not their first one. So they will have best practices, if you will, on how to do it. And so, once we have that information, yeah, we can put together a presentation and have more discussion on that.
And I'm sure Ms. Amber is gonna be pulling, pu- pushing out a wealth of information for us to also share too with the community, but thank you. Thank you, thank you Chair.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, and, and Alderman, it's a good point, I just wanna point out, this is actually our quarterly, um, CWP committee meeting. So, the next one will be in June, um, the next quarter is in June, so, um, and that, that kind of nicely coincides with the, the ordinance that, that should be coming by then, so, um, we'll get at least an update on there, I'm sure there are other topics, and probably, I think, kind of alluded to water needs to be an issue that we get some updates on too, but yeah, just wanna make sure that we're, this is something that we have set up in, in ordinance, and, and we're gonna continue to, to look for these, you know, really good information in a easy, consumable, you know, quick format, so that we all stay current on, on our utility, so thank you.
I think that, the one thing that I'm intrigued about is, and, and it came more from the deratio, um, we had situations where we'd bring up, we'd bring up a, a neighborhood, and we thought everybody was on, and we found out that there was like one or two people coming in off a different line or something, and, and they were still down, and we're saying it's up, and they're screaming at us that they're down, and we're, I had that on, on quite a few occasions, and, uh, this, this will actually, I think, uh, help that, um, as we go forward, so I think, and, and I think it would, that would make things a lot more efficient in the event we have another, hopefully we don't, but we have another situation like that, I think it would be more beneficial for the troubleshooters in that, uh, in your office, so, um, that's great, so. All right, um, Mr. Clerk, we got three people that, that wanna talk about this, the, the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the first speaker is Ann Logue.
Go ahead, Ms. Logue.
Okay, so, I just wanted to thank you guys for having this session, this'll be, uh, a start in how we can ask questions and get them answered, and so that's not this polarized setup where people are coming up here and complaining, and then you guys are just sitting here, and so there's no back and forth, so that, that is something that we need to work on, is having, uh, a way to ask questions and get them answered in a significant real-time format, so this is, this is getting there, and I also wanna congratulate CWP on the AMI uh, funding, I think that's gonna be important, residents will be able to, uh, see exactly, uh, about their energy, uh, intake, and maybe they can adjust it, and I think it, it matters a great deal when they're taking their energy and the peak times, and so you guys will be able to deal with that. And they did mention that AMI meters will be, uh, a significant help to solar energy, I think I remember that. This, uh, chart that I handed out, you've seen it before, but I added one more item, and that's wind, solar, with a natural gas backup. It's my understanding that the city has a one hundred and eighty, no, a one hundred and eighteen megawatt natural gas plant, and the domen four is one ninety to two oh four megawatts, so the natural gas plant does have some power to it. Uh, that last line item on how to compare choices and energy resources is significant, because it'd be a way to transition and combine renewables with fossil fuels, and slowly wean us away from our bad habit, and, uh, so for those people in the audience, uh, basically, this is, uh, a chart that compares all the different choices, maybe not all of them, but most of them, of how we could go about utilizing energy resources in the future. And the most important thing about this chart is that part of it is, how much is it gonna cost us over a five-year span, uh, fifteen-year span, and how much does it cost, like, for solar, you're gonna have an upfront cost maybe of a certain amount, but then you're not gonna have, nobody's gonna charge you for sunlight. Uh, but we are gonna get charged for purchasing coal and transporting coal and handling that waste. So, all these different aspects of battery storage, coal, geothermal, hydrogen, hydro power, natural gas, oil, solar with battery storage, wind with battery storage, solar without battery storage, and then wind and solar with natural gas backup, that speaks to the reliability, and I, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I can't really speak completely to that, but I know that in England, that they are using this kind of method, and they've managed to cut back on their coal quite a bit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Actually, if I could just real quickly, and I just wanna tell you, um, so, I'm married to someone from northern England, which is known as a very, um, thrifty part of the country, and the last time we were there, when people talk about solar panels, there were solar panels all over the place. England is known for not being a sunny place.
Oh yeah.
And yet, these, these people who are, we'll say thrifty, not tight, but you're right, it is, it is something that, that is making progress, and, and I'm excited to see twenty-eight, uh, I mean, our, our next, our next purchase is a big one, so thank you for your support in staying on this. Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Hand, hand.
Good evening. I have a couple things here, uh, first, I'm happy about the twenty- We have a couple of things here. First, I'm happy about the 25-megawatt solar ordinance coming. That's a big help to our city. And I wanted to talk first about a couple of corrections. We, you know, we really do need to have these public utility meetings, as Ann Logue said, as real public meetings, where the public can ask questions and get answers. That's how we did things when the last IRP was being done. And by the way, the legislation, House Bill 2902, doesn't have anything in it that says it's stripping power away from local people. It's intended to give people power to address their local utilities, their co-ops. A two-month delay is not a hill I want to die on. I didn't think they were actually going to get this going until later in the year, anyway. So it seems reasonably prudent to wait to see what shakes out of the legislation. That said, I find it strange that the bill, House Bill 2902, is billed as the Sierra Club's bill. It's not. There is a huge, huge coalition of people that are pushing for this bill, including the Illinois Environmental Council itself, all of its member groups, the Citizens Utility Board. It's not the Sierra Club's bill. The Sierra Club is lobbying in favor of the bill. And the reason for that bill is the fact that the vast majority of municipal utilities and co-ops haven't done integrated resource plans. And it doesn't exempt investor-owned utilities. There's a separate law that compels investor-owned utilities to do integrated resource plans every five years at least. And some of them do them more often, because it's smart. I did want to touch on the carbon capture issue, project. I want to reiterate what I've said before. Carbon capture and storage has never, ever, ever been cheaper or better than zero-emission technologies like solar and wind. In fact, carbon capture and storage costs twice as much. This project, the catch-and-release project, it's a freebie. We're not having to pay for that. That's fine. But what happens at the end of it? Where are we going to be? Why is this characterization well for sequestration being built down by Pawnee? Okay, we're not going to sequester anything there. Why is that spot on city land being targeted? Why are they investigating it if they don't intend to sequester carbon right here in Sangamon County? Safely achieving sequestration requires this type of site characterization. But they did that at ADM, and look what happened. Fly-by-night characterization is baloney. They claimed that their site indicator wouldn't leak past regulatory muster, only to have multiple unreported leaks within two years. So this can be exceedingly dangerous. This has to be considered as part of the costs of an integrated resource plan that keep Dahman four running. Whether you like the idea of carbon capture or not, the public hates it. The public hates it. We're quite familiar with the sort of negative NIMBY effect that all kinds of projects have, especially big projects. Any positive perception of CCS vanishes when the idea is to run it near actual people. Here, it's not NIMBYism. It's legit. The perceived risks and costs are real. We don't want it here. Sangamon County came together with environmentalists, standing with farmers and businesspeople unanimously saying, just plain folks, too, just saying, "Not here. No CO2 pipelines, no sequestration, no CO2 toxic dumps in central Illinois. It's economically unsound, it's unnecessary. Cleaner technology is available and proven, and it costs half as much. It's unsafe, it's ineffective, it leaked at ADM, it has widespread opposition for many legitimate reasons. It's inefficient and forces CWLP to even use up to 25% more capacity just to run the CCS. It makes no sense." Thank you.
Thank you. Lori McKernan.
Good evening. So I'm here to speak about communication and transparency, or lack thereof. So these words have been used many times in the last week's meetings, the city council meetings, and community the whole. And I want to share my thoughts on these in relation to CWLP in this meeting. I appreciate having these meetings, but they're lacking in both areas, communication and transparency. As of today, there was no mention of this meeting on the city's website, in the city council agenda, the city's calendar, or the city Facebook page. As of today, the presentation deck wasn't available on the city council's agenda page, so we weren't able to see what was going to be said. So I will reiterate what, what Don Hanrahan said about local control. So this House bill does not take local control away from Springfield. It takes away the control from the utilities to dictate our energy future and gives that control back to you, our city government, and to the people. IMUA is the Illinois Municipal Utilities Association. It's a nonprofit service organization that advocates for and represents Illinois municipalities that own and operate public utility systems. Doug Brown is the chairman of IMUA. And while he doesn't receive a salary in this role, I have to ask who he's representing when he negotiates legislation and when he's involved in decision-making about which legislation IMUA will lobby for. Is he representing IMUA? Is he representing CWLP? Or is he representing Springfield's residents? Are any of you consulted or asked to vote on CWLP's position when negotiating these legislations? Do any of you know what side the city lobbyists are taking when they go to this Capitol building to talk to politicians? So most of my written statement today is about how you all often get half stories from CWLP on these issues. So one that I want to point out is just from a couple of weeks ago, at City, or the Committee of the Whole, when Alderwoman Nottriano asked Doug Brown about the ordinance that approved the $4.95 million that included this substantial payment for MISO grid upgrades. Doug Brown, once again, took the opportunity to disparage renewable energy. He said, "Basically, some of these fees are also to pay for large transmission projects to the grid to basically bring renewables across the country. These fees will continue to go up for all utilities." End quote. So while renewable energy is one of the reasons we need to pay such a large sum to MISO to upgrade the grid, it's by no means the only reason. To call out renewable energy and not state the other reasons is deceptive and pushes a narrative that seems to be intended to sway you against renewable energy. So here are two quotes that you need to hear about the upgrade to the grid to understand the full picture. So the U.S. Department of Energy says, "Our electric infrastructure is aging, and it's being pushed to do more than it was originally designed to do. Modernizing the grid to make it smarter and more resilient through the use of cutting-edge technologies, equipment, and controls that communicate and work together to deliver electricity more reliably and efficiently can greatly reduce the frequency and duration of power outages. It can reduce storm impacts, and it can restore service faster when outages occur. Utilities also benefit from a modernized grid, including improved security, reduced peak loads, increased integration of renewables, and lower operational costs." So that was DOE. The Illinois Clean Jobs Coalition says, "Illinois' power grid is struggling to keep pace with a surge in demand largely caused by data centers. Furthermore, Illinois' power grid operators PJM Interconnection and the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, that's MISO, are years behind schedule in connecting clean energy projects to the grid that could power millions of homes. As a result, Illinois electric customers are increasingly threatened with price volatility. The power grid may struggle to maintain reliability as extreme weather intensifies, and Illinois climate progress is at risk." So while clean energy, renewable energy is certainly a factor in the need for MISO to upgrade our grid, it's not the sole reason, as Mr. Brown's statement implies. CWLP has repeatedly stressed the need for reliability and resiliency in our electric service, and a smart grid with cutting-edge technology is needed for that reliability, yet he didn't mention that when explaining this ordinance. So MISO has a 20-year long-range plan. CWLP should be aware of this and should be using this information to keep you informed about potential rate increases. This information should also be used to inform the various scenarios in the upcoming IRP process. So CWLP is doing you and the public a disservice by giving a biased picture of our potential energy sources. It's not transparent to give only one side of a complex, multi-sided story. Transparency and communication, we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone else that signed up to speak on this? All right. With that...
Mr. Chair, real quick.
I'm sorry, Alderman Gregory.
I was reading something else. Alderwoman Conley, who, so since the transition of Alderman Redpath to Clerk Redpath, who replaced him on the committee?
Well, we're all the committee. We probably need to talk about that. I could use a co-chair.
It won't be me. I recommend somebody else.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if we have to vote on that to...
Yeah, we should, we should move in second to make our...
We'll do. So we, should, can we do that at Committee of the Whole, or do we have to do that at a council?
You can do it at this committee, maybe.
Okay. Well, then I will make the motion to add Alderwoman Purchase as co-chair.
Second.
We got a motion as second to add Alderwoman Purchase as the co-chair. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Next, we have ordinances tabled and remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances? You don't have any?
We don't have any.
All right, good. Let's see. Now, for ordinances for committee consideration, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
2025-118, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing a contract UW2501-59, South Fork Pump Station pumps and electrical upgrades, rebid with Hinson Robinson Company, and the amount not to exceed $742,909, and an authorization supplement appropriation, the amount of $427,909 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-119, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of backhoe loader from Martin Equipment Inc. from a third-party cooperative purchasing agreement for source well, and the amount not to exceed $174,122 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for second, second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-120, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2026 international dump trucks from Rush Truck Center of Illinois, Inc., from the state contract, and the amount not to exceed $299,317.12 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-121, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement parts for Dahman Unit Four finished superheat inlet pendants from Wood Group USA, Inc., and the amount not to exceed $72,820 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Public Works, excuse me. 2025-122, an ordinance authorizing amendment number one to a professional service agreement with WHKS and Company for additional engineering services for roadway and drainage improvements on Adloff Lane between Stevenson and Stanford, in the amount of $38,000. And for the total amount not to exceed $128,464 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-123, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a construction and engineering agreement with WHKS and Company, and the amount not to exceed $140,033.50 for the Adloff Lane road and drainage improvements for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
125-124, I'm 2025-124, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a master service agreement with MV5 Geospracil, Inc., for the various support services and deliverables for the geographic information system, for the amount not to exceed $355,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-125, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of a contract number PW25-12-58 with PH Broughton and Sons, Inc., to furnish construction on Adloff Lane improvements, and the amount not to exceed $1,235,237 for the Office of Public Works.
Move the consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
General City Business, 2025-126, an ordinance approving the appointment of Stephen M. Simpson-Black to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for debate. Is Mr. Black here? Simpson-Black? Hey, Stephen. Come on up. I think everybody knows you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Steve Simpson-Black. I reside in Ward One, and I look forward to serving. Any questions?
Thank you for your interest.
All right. Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Steve?
You're not going to grill me?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
We'll grill you next week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-127, an ordinance approving the appointment of Wade Cammon to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Got a motion, second for debate. Is, is Mr. Cammon here tonight? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-128, an ordinance approving the appointment of Susan Rempfer to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission.
For debate.
Got a motion, second for debate. Is Susan here? Next week? Okay, thank you, Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-129, an ordinance authorizing to, authorizing to Zachary Fitzgerald, a current city Springfield police officer, for a, for a statement of workers' compensation claim number 24WC-025890, in the amount not to exceed $24,713.
Move for consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-130, an ordinance authorizing payment to a workers' compensation settlement with Jacob Bartnik, a current city Springfield Fire Department employee, for a settlement of workers' compensation claim number 24WC-013308, in the amount not to exceed $29,238.75.
Move for consent.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-131, an ordinance authorizing payment to Rhett Spingle, a former Springfield police officer, for a settlement of workers' compensation claim 23WC-025863, in the amount not to exceed
Consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-132, an ordinance authorizing decrease of number Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of the business by China King Restaurant, LLC, DBA China King, located at 120 North Grand Avenue West.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-133, an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for the new China King Express, Inc., DBA China King, located at 120 North Grand Avenue West.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-134, an ordinance authorizing the increase of number Class E and Class I liquor licenses due to the new business by Shields Gourmet Bakery and Bottle Shop located at DBA Shaley's Gourmet Bakery and Bottle Shop located at 225 South Sixth.
Got a...
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2025-135, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Springfield and Alternative Claims Management, LLC, ACM, to provide damage recovery services for vehicle-related losses for the term of three years.
Move consent, second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Eyes have it.
2025-136, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of four mobile vehicle barrier MVB-3X systems in the amount not to exceed $562,524 for the advanced security technologies for the Springfield Police Department.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt amendment number one.
Second.
Got a motion and second for amendment number one. Mr. Corporation Counsel, could you advise us on the amendment?
So the police department wants to purchase four of these vehicles, but we're waiting on a grant for one, so we're amending this for the purchase of three vehicles. And the quote for $562,524 is for those three vehicles.
Now, does this also include originally in their thing? They wanted a big 350 Ford F-350 truck to pull it and all that? Is that something that's still in there, or I didn't have the opportunity to dive in? Do you know?
So...
No, we were going to look at other options.
Okay, good. So they pulled that 80, 90 grand out for that? Then what was originally...
This does have the trailer that...
This is just the... Mr. Beal? Chief Beal? Sorry, I should have just called you up and had you...
No problem at all. I figured I could answer your question, probably the easiest. So, yeah, that's 70, I believe it's $72,000 was pulled out, was pulled out for the F-250 or F-350 truck.
All right. The only other question I have for you is there's talk about... To me, it would make more sense if Public Works was the one that dealt with these and not the police department. I mean, they're used to putting barriers out, and I'd rather have them... I'd rather not have sworn officers putting barriers out. And I don't know, I guess I should talk to the mayor about that, and we can do it offline, but that does concern me, so...
Yeah, we'd love to have a conversation with Director Fuchs and yourself and whoever else would want to be part of that about logistics...
What the heck?
About the logistics of that, so...
You got it? Okay. Thank you. Alderman Gregory?
So, okay, so we're changing this, changing this out from a purchase that we originally wanted to purchase these? And we're going with...
Well, it was in the budget, I believe, is what changed.
Correct.
Yeah, I think the amendment was, it was four, and we brought it down to three.
Yeah, we just had four trailers, and this amendment brings it down to three, which is what the quote was for.
So, all right, that's fine. So do you plan on coming to ask for another one or a system or...
We're going to seek a grant for the fourth one to see if we can get it that way.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. We got a motion and a second for the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Motion for consent as amended.
Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second? We got a motion and second as amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Mr. Clerk?
2025-136, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of four mobile vehicle barrier MV... I'm sorry. 120, 2025-137, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12 police interceptors in the amount not to exceed $715,656 from Marl Brothers Ford, Inc. for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion and second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Is that deal with all the ordinances? All right. We'll just move on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Alderman Gregory?
So, thank you. I noticed that we are hiring for the youth florists, the youth tree department, arborists. Thank you. So we continue with that. I thought it was on hold. I'm sort of confused what's going on with that. And the reason I ask, I'm very interested in the originality of the grant, making sure that we get low-income kids to learn about trees and planting trees.
Yes. The grant was stopped, and then the grant was reinvigorated. And so we lost about a month, and we just got those posted, and you'll be getting copies of those postings as well. And because we have asked before and asked again for help in recruiting those student arborists, but we're very excited it's back on.
Okay. All right. I just was surprised when I did see it is out there.
We were too. It was a really wonderful surprise.
All right, all right, thank you. I just got one more, Alderman Donlin. For Public Works, for my people at Public Works, I just want to ask Mr. Fuchs, can you help me out with a few things, my friend? And while you're on your way. I think there's got to be a disconnect somewhere within reporting and getting to the garage to get things. I'm just coming across some way-too-many issues where, you know, we're sending them in, it's reported, it's in the system, but the stuff's still there. And I know I can send them and all of that, but that takes time. And, you know, I get a little frustrated, so I want to ask some questions on... You know, it just seems like, you know, I'm sending stuff in, man, and yes, they're taking it. You know, I know it's alive. We got 2,900, you know, complaints still logged in there. Nobody else has more than 1,000. So, you know, some of this stuff just seems like it's still lingering and, you know, not picked up from where we're originally sending it. And this is months, and, you know...
Do you have a particular address or addresses that are...
I could definitely provide some. I sent some to... It's one on Washington, and I'll send it to you. But it was a car. It's a car sitting in there. I sent it before, and it's still there, and it's like some time ago. And it's still there, so I just casually ride by to check some of these things. And some of it's not done, and some of it does get done. But it just seemed like there's some type of disconnect with who gets it and who I send it to. And, you know, I'm only using three people, but it's just some type of disconnect.
The first thing I would ask is if you have specific addresses, if you could get those to me straight away, and we'll look into all of it.
I will.
As you know, there are a lot of calls for service.
Right.
We've got a lot of issues, and I don't want to say that things are falling through the cracks, but we have a very full agenda. I think we do the best we can to address them. But because of the volume of work, I'm afraid that's going to happen from time to time. I would just ask that if you have a difficulty, that you communicate with me directly.
I will. I will. So, and this flows into my next subject. So our leafbag pickup, our stick pickup, and then the street sweepers? Does this run in a system? Like, are we going to pick up the sticks, bag, sweep, or...
The yard waste pickup, of course, is every two weeks.
Right.
Lake Area's had that contract, and they seem to be doing a pretty good job. Every once in a while, we do get a report that something has been missed, and they're very diligent about picking that sort of thing up. The branch pickup will start in April.
Okay.
So we'll start that straight away. And I know with all the windstorms that we've had recently, there's a lot of sticks, a lot of branches around, so we'll be attending to that directly.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking this, Dave, because, you know, I've advocated for these street sweepers and make sure we have four, and I thought we were going to develop a process to where we put one in each quadrant, like our leafbags and stuff, and we would just have that sort of rotating.
We do have a rotation, but we get a lot of requests, especially since the last go-around with all the wind and the, I hate to say it, the sweet gum trees and the little balls that fall out of them. Anything that was left in the trees is pretty much in the street and on the sidewalks. So we are attending those. We do like to deal with complaints. If somebody calls and says we've got a really bad problem here, we kind of veer off the schedule, but it is our goal to have a schedule and to stay on it.
Okay.
And once we get into warmer weather and we're not dealing with a lot of other issues, I think that will probably improve.
Well, I can say that, Dave, I would gamble that Ward 2 has some of the, some of the needs more, that there can't be an emergency warrant to take off one that's riding through the east side to go anywhere else in the city. And I just, you know, I got to see more of it. I don't have time to send in every street that we need to do this. I will. I try to communicate with everybody.
I know you do.
And me, I'm just sort of getting a little frustrated because I don't have time to send in complaints every time I'm riding. I know we got a lot of them and stuff. We got a lot of people doing a lot of jobs, and I just feel like it's got to get better. We still at 2,900. I was at 2,900 a year ago, so I'm really getting frustrated because I'm seeing some progress in tearing down houses. I know we're working hard out there, but we got to knock this number down. You know, it just seems like, you know, we're right there. So I'm trying to do my job policy-wise. I know, you know, I support Public Works with all our equipment and stuff like that, but some things we... And I'll send you more, you know, offline, man, so I just had to let that out.
I understand.
Thank you.
I understand. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Conley?
Thank you. And Director, don't leave, because I actually want to follow up what Alderman Gregory said. We've really been asking to have some sort of a posted schedule for these street sweepers. I have another one I need to talk to you about, partially just because that would give us the ability to help promote to our residents. You know, hey, if you can't get your street, your car off the street this week, they're much more efficient if the cars are moved. So if there's any way that we could get a map or just kind of a, you know, loosely, we know you're going to be in this part of, you know, the northeast cordon or section, whatever, it would really help. I know Alderman Purchase is much better than I am about communication, but even I will be able to, you know, we can get this word out and make them more efficient when they're on our streets so that it's, you know, people will move their cars for a street sweeper. And then we're not seeing the lines go like this around the cars. It would be very helpful for us, too, and hopefully improve efficiency of what they're supposed to be doing.
I'll certainly take that back to the garage, and we'll do the very best that we can.
I know they're trying, and I get, I understand that. I just, I think if, give us a chance to help you, too, to make sure that they can be efficient, I will be part of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And then I just, my next comment is not for Public Works. I just wonder if you hadn't heard me walking in giddy. The bookmobile is here. We just heard. I know, there's pictures. It's, I'm so excited. We just heard the news at Budget Session, sounded kind of dark and gloomy, and it's out here. We've got it. It's got, it looks beautiful. Very excited. I won't put in the very first request, but I just want to say I know locations in Ward 8 that would be happy to host a bookmobile event, and looking forward to seeing more books in our residents' hands. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. You don't have to get up, Dave Fuchs. I just want to thank you because my house has been coming down, and I want to thank you because I've been getting...
Alderman Gregory, now you know where, why yours isn't getting done.
I've been getting great response time. I mean, you know, I send you the picture, the zone manager's there, thanks to the mayor, and then it's done. So it's going great for me there. However, I need your help with 50 mattresses. I don't know if you're aware, the Red Roof Inn...
I called it in today.
They thought it was one, see? But tomorrow, can you please give me an update on what happens with that? I don't know if the business thought the regular trash people take them away or what the plan is, but they're awful close to the street, I'm being told. I'm going to drive by it on my way home to see. But 50 mattresses at one time is a lot, even when your crew has to respond. But don't fail me now. We got a good thing going. I appreciate you. Thanks.
Well, and I guess the question I would have, Alderman, is the city going to charge them for hauling away 50 mattresses?
Well, first, we're trying to find out what is the business thinking? I mean, they put them out there. Do they have their own thing going on, somebody coming to get them?
Right.
But I'm going to start the clock.
Right. They're almost in the highway.
Okay.
All right. Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I want to talk about our favorite topic, old-town apartments. You all probably heard of it before. It's been an ongoing problem, needless to say, and I just wanted to say thank you to the police department and the mayor's office for some of the recent efforts behind the scenes that have been done. There's been some problems in the area, the addition of the temporary cameras and all of that, and the patrols. Corporation Counsel says we're going to get there with some of these, some progress there, but it's a slow court process. But thanks for everybody's patience, and thanks for the department's efforts. And that goes to Public Works and others that have been involved as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now under new business, I do have something first. I would like to call up Nikki Baker. Is Nikki here? Come on up, Nikki. I believe that this is your, is this your last meeting, Nikki?
It is.
Well, I wanted to, Nikki's leaving us, and I just wanted to thank you for your service. And on behalf of all of us, you know, good luck in the future, and thank you for what you did. We were, you did a good job up there in HR, and that's a thankless job, and it's a hard job. And I know you worked a lot of late, late nights, and thank you very much, so...
I have a good team.
I have a good team, I get to work with a good group, and so it's been an honor, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good luck to you, thank you.
Any other new business? I wouldn't expect other. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. This Friday, March 28th, at the Kid's M, we have the Bit by Bit Expedition on Hilling, and it's a ribbon cutting, so please come out. It's from 5:30 to 8:30, and it is talking about healing as a physical, emotional, and social process. The exhibition considers how we mend, recover, and find resilience, both as individuals and as a community, and it's really needed right now. So I would encourage everyone to come out and visit, and it will be going on from March 28th to May 11th. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other new business? All right, citizens, to address the council, Mr. Clerk, Caitlin Weiss. Caitlin here?
Yes, Jada Smith, I live at four, I'm on East Davis, I'm apartment 111, near North Village. My church is having a concert this Saturday night, on 29th. We're having a Sukkot Supper, costs seven dollars, pussy's going for your center missions, and concert, that starts at 4:30, and concert starts at six. Like, see all you guys there, and Sherman, Church of Nazareth, and Sherman, down from that new cutting market, and Barlock Restaurant, might done well from there. Like, see you guys there. I got some full chairs.
Okay.
Like, see you guys there.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk? Erin Cahill?
He got a new job, Sean.
Hey, how's it going? So, fresh back from a 30-day ban, thank you, thank you, for, quote, "my behavior." My behavior that, you know, I was attempting to show a couple of folks email notifications back and forth between me and the city. They clearly didn't want to see that, as three police officers came up here. Seemed real over excessive to me, especially since I was just pissed off. I wasn't even trying to scare anybody. But those of you that were scared, if any of the Alders were scared, I apologize for that. I don't apologize for coming up here and trying to talk to Misty. I am 100% within my rights to speak with them regarding them dropping the ball. I didn't drop the ball, they dropped the ball. I was scheduled to speak with all y'all, and I had a solution for unhoused. I had a solution, a very reasonably priced solution at that. But, you know, for whatever reason, somebody dropped the ball, and I didn't get the chance to speak to y'all about that. So I'll have that prepared for y'all next week. But, you know, I think censoring your residents is utter crap. Ooh, she dropped a bad word. Okay, why black her out? Because you can? I disagree. I disagree. Nothing says you can do that. This is literally the epitome of an open forum for us to speak about our government. This is what the city council meeting is designed to be for. We have a right to address our grievances to our government. That is our God-given right. Don't roll your eyes. And for anybody, mayor, corporation council, to decide that we don't get that right is I disagree with it 110%. I was attempting, I was attempting to straighten something out. Y'all blocked Caitlin Weiss for dropping an F-bomb, really? It befuddles me how some of these decisions are made. It really does. Like, y'all just wake up in the morning and say, yeah, screw it, we're gonna go this route with this one. Seems kind of illogical to me. And I know I'm probably gonna get an email about this, you know, but again, this is 100% the epitome of why we have these opportunities to speak to our government. The government doesn't get to tell us when, or where, or how we can use our voice. The First Amendment is to restrict y'all, not us. The First Amendment is there for us, period, full stop. Yeah, case law, case law, case law. None of the case law you sent me, by the way, had anything to do with speaking at a city council or a town hall. I was told not to push it, so I didn't push it, you know? But I digress. We need change. We need change. We need big change. I don't know what that change is. I don't know how to get it through to folks that we have a right to air our grievances. Words don't hurt anybody. Words never have hurt anybody. So why are people scared of words? Why do words affect so many people to the freaking heart? It's just baffling. So, you know, I didn't have anything prepared because, you know, I was too pissed off about coming off of a 30-day ban. Yeah, it's pretty ridiculous, if you ask me. But anyway, yeah, have a great day.
Mr. Clerk?
Good morning, and good evening, everybody, City Council Committee. My name is Robert Williams. I'm here to talk about mental health and the homeless. I have been dealing with mental health issues all my life. I was raped by my sisters and her friends. I said that before, but I see it and see it again. Well, as I grew up to become an adult, I'm still going through trials and tribulations about that. But I also know how to deal with people, and y'all are not doing that, and I feel-
Please don't lean on the microphone.
Say that again?
Please don't lean on the microphone. Thank you.
Well, like I said, I feel that with the knowledge I got, and association with these people that's out here homeless like myself, I can get more done than you all, the ones that's working for mental health. All they do is go to the bread line, go to the mission, and just basically go back to the office and make out a report. That ain't nothing. That ain't doing nothing for nobody. I'm here to tell you for real, since I've been here, I haven't talked to no mental health since I had this problem with this lady who falsely accused me. But I still deal with my issues one day at a time, and I do know who to go talk to when I do need help, and that's my high-power card. But like I said, I've been asking y'all for this job to deal with these people that's out here on the street. We, not all of them don't want to be housed, but those that do, you know, should have rules and regulations to a certain degree. But then there's those that's out there that just need to be, you know, talked to, and mental health don't come out there on the street and talk to us. You know, what's up? How you gonna know what I'm going through? I don't want to go in your room, in your office, and talk to you. And then, let's, for the record, I'm not no police, I don't work for the police, and I'm not no stool pitch. So don't ask me about anybody that's doing something wrong. Now, another thing, when I got out the joint, I volunteered, I worked for Faithful Coalition of Coming Good, and I did some good. They know me, and they know I care. But like I said, I want to get a job. I think I can get us where we need to be off the street, you know? And they talking about bringing back fines, arresting people, you know? But mental health, I seen somebody today, and she just came in, she didn't see the person she was looking for, and left outside of the mall. Okay, he wasn't there, she wasn't there, whoever. But that ain't how you do it. Why don't y'all patrol, walk the street, talk to the people like they talk to me? A lot of people talk to me, not just mental health people. And right now, I'm back in a hotel, and paying my bill, but I need some help. I'm going through some things. I'm in, broke up a relationship, I'm single, I want to mingle. But also, like I said, I want to get a place, my own place to stay, because I don't want to be kicked out like I was just done. That ain't cool, you know? It ain't nothing like y'all. But if you mayor, let me work for you. I can tell you basically what's going on that mental health is not telling you. One time we came up here, I heard all y'all say, y'all don't know what the fuck, excuse my French, with the money.
I do.
And, putting it in their pocket. But anyway, I would like to help, and there's a lot of people out there that need help, like my man Brian, who died last year, was 77 years old. He just died right there on McCarthy Street, uh, McCarthy, I think that is, by the library, and on, sitting on a bench, froze to death. And all the time, I'm asking people to help him, and with nobody to help him. They should have took the power from him and put him somewhere where he could live. But yet, y'all let the man freeze. The man used to, he couldn't walk to the bathroom, take a piss. We used to take him to the bathroom, take a shit. The man-
Mr. Williams?
That's not, you know, something we should look, let just go away.
Mr. Williams, your time's up. Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Brianna Eilers. Thank you. So, congratulations to the HR lady. It doesn't look like she's over there anymore, but I just wanted to ask before, because I haven't heard anything about Williams's numbers, about those numbers of like, who is working inside the town, like, the city of Springfield, and who's working outside of the city of Springfield? I haven't heard anything about that, so I'm just curious if that is gonna be resolved before the HR lady walks out the door. My poor people issue this time is in regards to Project Scope. I don't know if you guys saw what happened with the school board. Erin, one of the very first times that I came up and talked to you, I was very honest with you about the fact that I truly believe a lot of our issues in Springfield are tied to our schools at this point. And if we don't have Project Scope, and we don't have kids that are able to, say a parent is working in the morning, they gotta leave at 6 o'clock in the morning, but your child doesn't get dropped off until, you know, 7:30. Where, how? If you don't have family, the where and the how is Project Scope. You take your kid to Project Scope, Project Scope gets your kid to school, and then your kid's done with school, your kid goes back to Project Scope, and you're able to continue working and go pick your child up after school. Without that program, our kids are gonna be out on the street, or they're gonna be latch key kids. Those are the two options, because we cannot allow parents to stop working at this point in time. They can't do it. If you're not gonna help homeless people and the unhoused, then why would they choose to be out on the streets with kids? That sounds horrible. So, yeah, I highly recommend that if you have friends in the school board, that you talk to them and ask them, what in the heck is happening? And why in the heck that it was even a thing? Why it was dropped on a Friday? And I'm curious to know why there is so many connections between this city council, our school board, and the Springfield-Sangamon County Growth Alliance. There's so many people who are sitting on the board of whatever the heck that non-for-profit or planning, whatever the heck it is, and they're, all of our contracts are within that planning block or non-for-profit. I don't even know what it is yet. All I know is that every single time that I look at like what you guys are passing here, it's in relation to a company that's listed there, and then there's a person in power, a political power, that's sitting on the board as well. School and city. I don't even know about county, because I haven't climbed up that far yet. I'm gonna remind you, I started climbing from the school board, because I had to ask the school board, why is my disabled son being targeted out of school? My severely disabled son, who qualifies for SSI, was targeted out of school for over a year and a half, and nothing happened. And so now, here I am, because, you know, I've climbed up my way through the trenches, I've dealt with the school board, and the school board labeled me crazy, and they stopped dealing with me. So now, here I am, because I noticed that some of the dirt is over here as well. So I'm just letting you know that that's exactly what I'm looking into, and I hope that all of you are nervous. Anyway, back to my 15-minute community. I don't know where we are on the unhoused situation, but of course, you all know that I'm gonna be up here preaching about a 15-minute community within the Springfield city limits, until I'm blue in the face, until it actually happens. Reason being is because you've got Washington Street Mission right here, you've got Mercy Communities right here, you've got 50th Street Renaissance right here, you've got the bread line right here, and then everybody's congregating right there, because all the resources are right there, and they're able to walk in between the resources that they need, because they, you know, their basic human needs, and that's what you need in order to survive. So let's acknowledge that we've created the problem, and let's fix it, please.
Thank you.
Evening, City Council. I kind of feel like I'm starting to be a broken record here. This is the third time we've issued a 30-day ban to somebody profanity. I'm not really sure how you guys punish your kids. When they do something wrong, do you immediately just go straight to the belt? Is that what we do here? We just grab them right up, throw them right on the ground, and get straight to work? 30-day bans are onerous, they cool free speech, and they're intentional to do so. Profanity might bother you, but you know what really bothers a lot of us? The disgusting kind of things that happen in this city to the unhoused, people that are in rape parlors, children on the east side, and so forth. That disgusts almost all of us, I would hope. But what really upsets someone like me, as a communications major, is cooling free speech. I have the right to speak to you. John F. Kennedy famously said, "Ask not what you can do for your government." Oh, come on, today's not the day to forget a quote, but I guess my point is to you, I don't like that quote. I think it's stupid. I'm not gonna ask you what I can do for you. I'm gonna demand what you can do for me and my community, because that's your job. That's what you got elected for. Not to play petty games with people because they use bad words. I mean, doesn't that seem childish to a lot of you, that we're throwing out 30-day bans to our citizens because they said one bad word? Let's not play the game of acting like that's the offensive part here. Whether it's backroom deals, taking money from the east side, shunting resources to other parts of town, that's disgusting, that's profane, that's obscene. But to attack our citizens because they're frustrated, they're emotional, I implore you to get used to it. I don't know if you guys watch the news as ardently as I do, but things are getting worse. Money's getting tighter, federal funds are disappearing, so tight, in fact, the District 186 just tried to knock out a program that helps over 900 children and employs over 80 people by doing a dead drop on a Friday agenda, like we're too stupid to catch them. Well, they found out when they got an entire room full of citizens in there, and I dare you to do something like that again, because I promise you, we will all show up, just like we did last night, just like we did for the unhoused ordinance, just like we will every single time. You guys think you're gonna get away with something with us, because it's too late now. People don't have a lot left. It's getting a lot thinner around those margins, and I encourage you to really think about that, because your citizens, I'm sure, have already reached out to you with their concerns about the loss of federal funding, about the loss of those allocations of resources that used to fix those gaps in the budget. That magic miracle ain't coming around anytime soon. So I really think you should consider, instead of letting your city hand out 30-day bans to frustrated citizens because they might slip and use a curse word, that looks preposterous, and it makes you look petty and childish. It makes it seem like you can't handle the response that your citizens have to you. makes it seem like you can't handle the response that your citizens have to you. Caitlin has every right to be frustrated. One of our city's officers was intoxicated enough, he ran over two people, and then got coddled for four hours on that scene. If anyone doubts that he got coddled, go check out the police discipline logs. The only reason it wasn't worse is their outdated labor agreement that's coming up when? Next year. That's the kind of thing that really matters here, not some BS about shutting people down and cooling their free speech because they said a mean word to you. It's really frustrating in a society where our president, our president of our country, and I don't care what political party you stand for, if you watch the behavior and rhetoric coming from that cabinet and that leader right now, and you think to yourself that that's a professional, that that's the kind of person who should have the keys to the nuclear codes, you might wanna head on over to Memorial and get yourself a seventy-two-hour hold, my friend, because you're loosely tethered to reality. The simple fact is, is things are getting worse, and they're not gonna get better at a larger level. Ask the officers how crime's going. Let's see when those public aid payments run out, and those link payments are gone, and those SNAP payments dry up. Let's see what happens when parents' kids don't have after-school programs. You wanna talk about youth violence, it's a lack of things for them to do. When I grew up here, this city put prolific effort into shutting down Skank Skates, the asylum, and multiple other places where youth used to congregate, because it didn't have the resources or understanding on how to handle them. And I'll be quite honest, at forty-three, it still doesn't. And I can't even tell you how disappointing that is, that even after all this time, the best answer we have is, let's reopen the juvenile county facility and start locking 'em up, just like we did in the back...
Mr. President?
Maribel Cruz-Hain?
All right, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the last martyr in Yemen, Lebanon...
Chair, may I ask what that is, that QR code is, that's being held up? May I ask?
That is a QR code. You can read it. It says right there on top.
I, may I ask what it is and why it's being held up?
Letters demanding Mamad Khalil's release, because he's illegally held.
All right. Again, I will start. I'd like to, I mean, can we start? You guys paused me.
Go for, go.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the last martyr in Yemen, Lebanon, and Palestine. Two among the martyr were journalists Mohammed Mansour and Hossam Shabat. On July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, excerpt from the United Nations announcement titled, "Israel's Continued Occupation of Palestine Territory Is Unlawful," UN World Court. The UN International Court of Justice declared that Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territories, Gaza, West Bank, and East Jerusalem, is unlawful, and that all states under obligation not to recognize that decades-long occupation. The advisory from ICJ is legal opinion provided by the court on questions on international law. States obligations, all states are under obligation not to recognize as legal the situation arising from the unlawful presence of Israel. States are under the obligation to not to render aid or assistance in maintaining that situation created to continue the presence of state of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory." End of quote. Silence is violence. Michael Moore said, "I was experiencing what happens when the internal pain from being silent outweighs the risk of speaking up in moments of injustice." And once you see it, you can unsee it. Once you learn the real history, you can unlearn it. Once you begin to look at October sixth, October fifth, October fourth, and the seventy-five years of oppression and displacements, that's when you, truth opens up. And once you look under the hood and realize that government officials are bought and paid by the Israel lobby, you cannot look at our so-called democracy the same. Once you understand that our tax dollars are funding that genocide you're watching in real time, the palm of our hands, and believe it's a moral obligation to adamantly protest the atrocities we are witnessing and funding, or we are complicit. United Nations article, total ten, twenty-twenty-four, "Israel Must Immediately Stop Its Unprecedented Wanton Destruction of Healthcare Facilities in Gaza." All the hospitals have been bombed, people, all the hospitals, said Nabeel Peir, Chair of the Commission. By targeting healthcare facilities, Israel is targeting that right to health itself with a significant long-term detrimental effects on the civilian population. Children, children in particular have borne the brunt of these attacks, suffering both directly and indirectly from the collapse of the healthcare system. Human Rights Campaign, in a hundred-and-seventy-nine-page, a hundred-and-seventy-nine-page report, titled, "Extermination and Acts of Genocide: Israel Deliberately Depriving Palestinians in Gaza of Water." Water. Human Rights Watch found that Israeli authorities have intentionally deprived Palestinians in Gaza of access to water for drinking sanitation need for basic human survival. Israel authorities and forces cut off the latter restricted pipe water to Gaza, render most of Gaza's water and sanitation infrastructure useless by cutting electricity and resisting fuel, deliberately destroy and damage water and sanitation infrastructure and water repair materials, and block the entry of critical water supplies. Water is essential for human life. Yet for over a year, the Israel government has deliberately denied Palestinians in Gaza the bare minimum they need to survive, said Tihrana Hassan, Executive Director of Human Rights Watch. Are all these people lying? Actually, are all these people lying? Are the Palestinians lying? Are the Lebanese people lying? It's like everyone is lying, except for Israel, who's committed this genocide and ethnic cleansing. Letter excerpt from Mamad Khalil, Palestinian political prisoner from ICE detention, said, "Who has the right to have a right? You tell me who?" It's certainly not the humans crowded in the cells here. Justice escapes the contours of this nation's immigration facilities. I have always believed that my duty is not only to liberate myself from the oppressor, but also liberate my oppressor from hate, their hatred and fear. We need to push for the investments, sanctions, boycott. It is our moral obligation.
Time. Thank you. Thank you.
I wish you all the love for your liberation.
Brianna Roberts?
Yeah, you guys gonna put it back on me now, or what?
Is this a game with our citizens that we're playing here?
Don't start my time yet.
Order. Let's have order. Let's have some order. Let's have some order. Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
Mm-mm. Hold on. Don't start my time yet.
You started. Go ahead.
Oh, all right. So I just think it's absolutely disgusting that you guys switched the camera view to not show the QR code. Are you guys really that hateful? Look, let me just, let me just take a breath before I get a thirty-day ban. Yo, you getting too greedy with that gavel, all right? In the interest. Hello? Okay, I can just yell, in the interest of civility. For improving our communities and understanding that we have different ideas of achieving that, right? That's what was said last week, yeah? Which is so ironic, because I didn't see any civility from you last week, Ms. Mayor. I saw disdain for public comment, a lack of accountability, and dismissal for concerns of the female. Also...
Point of order, hold on one second. Ralph, are we restricting her from, is, is still red?
Why is the mic on? It's okay, I can yell at times.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
This is petty.
All right, it's on.
Yeah.
And if I go over my time, I'm gonna keep talking with the mic on. Thank you. Um, I don't think rolling your eyes while people are speaking is civil either. Or turning off my mic, that's not very civil. Um, what we saw last week was anything but civil. When Caitlin raised valid concerns and asked necessary questions, she was met with dismissal, condensation, and hostility. Not engagement, not accountability, just the same performative leadership that prioritizes control over conversation. And the treatment of Chelsea, Harley, and Trevor, let's not even mention how it feels like this city is trying to forget what happened to Sonia Massey. Instead of real leadership, we see intimidation. This is not civility. This is an administration more concerned with silencing citizens and criticism than serving the people who elected you in these seats. Meanwhile, somebody like Edgar J. Curtis, a campaign donor to Mayor Misty, and a lot of you on this board, is being rewarded for a day in his honor. But what has that man done in order to get honored in this city? What contribution, contributions to Springfield people justifies this level of recognition? Because this isn't about merit, this isn't about civil impact, this isn't, oh, this is, about political favoritism, plain and simple. And while personal allies are being celebrated, um, the real work that needs to be done in this city continues to get ignored. This city's council is the epitome of its who you know, and not what you know. So let's talk about Scope's removal. This move echoes the national push to dismantle the Department of Education in favor of privatized religious-based schooling. Cutting before and after-school programs disproportionately harms working families, particularly mothers who may be forced out of their work to stay home for lack of childcare options. This is a step backwards, a policy that risks forcing women back into traditional domestic roles under the guise of budget cuts. And instead of addressing this head-on, leadership remains silent as essential programs are stripped away. And a couple of months ago, I mentioned to you guys a program called CAHOOTS in Oregon. It's a based crisis intervention program. A program that could replace unnecessary police response with trained mental health professionals. Yet, no effort to implement such things happened until Zach Long brought it up in conversation to Aaron Conley, and they started making steps to plan a way to make that happen. So thank you for that.
And I apologize for forgetting you brought it up.
It's okay. How many times do we have to come here, present a solution, when it's not our job to do that in the first place, and watch them be ignored simply because it doesn't fit the agenda of the people with the money on the board? The refusal to listen to public concern and act accordingly is not just infuriating, it's a failure of leadership. Springfield's leadership claims to work for the people, but their actions prove otherwise. Real leadership is not about silencing opposition, it's not about rewarding allies while leaving communities struggling. It's about standing firm in the face of injustice and making decisions that benefit all residents, not just a select few. If we were to take that bunk civility pledge seriously, cause it doesn't look like we are today, you guys are really acting out, then let's take some time to reflect on our actions. Let's not just do performative statements. This means actually listening, I know that's hard, but listen to your community when we are giving what you guys give us. That means allowing residents to question leadership without fear of retaliation, like what just happened to me. And, this means ensuring recognition and resources are given based on real impact, not political loyalty. And since you guys interrupted the moment of silence that Maribel tried to do, we're gonna do it again. So, moment of silence, please, for those who have lost their lives in Yemen and Palestine and all these countries that we choose to ignore and forget. Thank you.
The woman, Noctiana?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I just need some clarity on what just happened. Um, can anyone tell me in the control room or at this dais why the mic was cut when Brianna started talking?
Okay.
The mic, you may have to touch...
Why they put the camera off Maribel when she tried to hold up her Bluetooth?
That, that is also a concern for me, um...
That's censorship, by the way.
I would, I would rec- and, can we, please, all right?
So I would...
I would recommend you talk to Haley. Um, she's, she's over that grid.
Can Haley's contacted her? So... I, um, if, if everyone could just let me have the floor for a minute, that'd be fab. Um, okay, so, I have been reading a lot today since the letters went out, um, and as I understand it, we cannot silence someone for the content of their speech. That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
We can silence someone for the manner in which they speak. So if they yell or pound the desk, or if they use profanity, um, and call people names, things like that, we can limit their speech.
Here, yes.
Okay. Um, so, what I did not wanna bring up, but here we are, um, is that this council, the ten of us, need to get it together and decide how we're going to run our meetings. Like, I, I understand you wanted to stop her speaking, but the correct thing to do, Brad, is say point of order, and then whatever...
Thanks for the clarification.
Your, your mother...
Let her speak, man. Stop treating her like that. Let her speak.
Ten, ten.
No, don't do that to her.
Okay, so...
Yeah, don't do that. Let her speak.
Order. Enough.
So, you, we, we really have to follow Robert's rules. I don't know if we need a little workshop or something, or a cheat sheet, but we cannot be treating every single person who comes up to the podium in a different manner. We're gonna get in trouble, we're gonna get sued.
Yes, you are.
Um, so, I, I really, if, if you have a problem with the way someone is addressing you, no one wants to hear, you know, F you to their face or anything like that. Um, I understand. Call it out, call it out in the right way, use your point of order, and, um, and we can try to correct the behavior as it's happening, as opposed to having the mayor send out letters after the fact to reprimand somebody for what they did in our meeting. So that's just my advice to, to the ten of us, uh, myself included, and, um, yeah, we, we should think about this and, and come back with something at the next committee of the whole, for how to deal with this, because right now, um, it's off the rails. Uh, people aren't feeling heard, and they're acting out because of it, and we are defensive, and we're acting out because of it, and it's gotta stop. And that's it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clark? Robert Fraser? Truly hard to follow, but I move forward. Contaminated laundry. Uh, one thing I was looking for was, uh, I was looking for in the city, do we have a Health and Human Services department? Because if we don't, we need one, because we're not recognizing something, something as simple as infections, viruses, and different things that dirty laundry harbor, whether it's pathogens or simply vi- viral. I have a whole list of names here. I'm not a doctor, I'm not anything to do in the medical, but some of these things are, 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 uh, obvious hepatitis A, scabies, uh, smallpox, respiratory infections, hepatitis B, coronavirus, influenza. All of these things affect people in their daily life. Health and Human Services far surpasses many other programs without pissing anybody off or making anybody angry. I won't mention anybody's department. Undervar- undervaluing Health and Human Services puts everyone at risk. Even our little children, who go to school with other little children that may not have laundry, uh, services at home, they have these things on them, and they may bring them home to you. Underval- uh, it also puts our health... It also puts our healthcare system under extreme pressure. Studies say 28% to 36% of hospital visits are preventable, a large percentage of infections and respiratory reasons. Clean laundry and linen prevent some of these problems. Much of our poverty and marginalized communities are treated for infections and related issues in the hospital, and they return right back to the infested areas that they got infected from to begin with. To recover, how well does that work? Not good. Probably has a lot to do with a lot of our antibiotics becoming ineffective these days. Medicines continue to have to come up with some super-duper pill to eliminate the latest problems that we don't know the long-term effects of how these new medicines react. How much does Health and Human Services for laundry cost? Is it sustainable? Far less cost to maintain than to replace. Clean linen is far less cost than shutting down cities and having stay-at-home orders. Sanitation is much cheaper than going to the emergency room for visits and hospital stays. CSA needs our public officials to value Health and Human Services, investing in CSA program and many others. It promotes much-needed change in our communities. Without good health, we don't have much of anything. Why does CSA continue? Because the powers that be, meaning public officials, don't believe Health and Human Services is a thing. Why that is, I'm not sure. I hear a lot, I hear some say, can't afford to address it. Not our problem. That is not the best answer. Because it is all of our problem, and we can't afford not to address it. If Health and Human Services was not important, we would not have received tens of millions of dollars to address the COVID-19 relief concerns. Once again, my question is, does the city of Springfield have a Health and Human Services Department so these concerns may be addressed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacey Neal.
Hold on a second. Alderman, NoTrionne?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Alderman Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain to you that we do have a Board of Health. We're combined with, like the animal control, with the county, and our citizens really don't get what we should be getting out of it. But we do have a... Who on the council is our representative on the Public Health Board?
We don't have one.
And see, there lies the breakdown and part of the problem. I wasn't around when they combined it, but supposedly we're supposed to always have representation on it. But politically, they do what they want with the animal control as well as public health. So this, it's not like we're not hearing you. It's that we may give a portion of our money to run these things, but we really don't get bang for our buck. Because I don't know why we wouldn't have our representation on that Public Health Board. And we're part, not only the largest part of the county, but also we probably are financing it or a part of it, just like we're financing a part of, you know, the other health part with these dogs and cats and all these issues with the animals. But we don't get the control because politics dictate we want to do it this way, when we need to do it what's right for the people, period. What's best that impacts the lives of our people and makes it better for the people. And it might not be the county. I keep saying that since I've been an Alderman, and I keep getting told the question about money. Oh, we could never afford to have our own animal control. Oh, yeah, we probably can now for sure. But I'm telling you how it is, and I want you to know the reality of it, that what I would do hearing something like that is look for my colleague that's supposed to be on that board, I think two of them in fact, and say, hey, carry this message back, help follow through, help connect to you. We can't even do that now. So I just wanted you to kind of understand the position we're in.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that hard for the public. For a Human Services, Health and Human Services is vital. If we don't have people, we don't have us. We don't have a city. So why is that left out?
Well, it's something that's before me and your time. That's all I could tell you. And it is combined, and that is our reality. Our public health is Sangamon County Public Health, and that's where we're supposed to go. Same way with these animal issues. We have to go to Animal Control, which falls under the same Public Health Department. And it is a loser, but we're not on the... Ain't got the numbers to change it. Let me say it like that. Thank you.
I understand.
Alderman Gregory?
What's the status of the two representatives from the city on that?
I'll pull the agreement we had with the county when we merged. I'll need to look into it and check the history, but I can report it to the council.
And my understanding, just to clarify, because I was the last one to be appointed, and it wasn't taken, was we, the agreement said we had so many years with people on the board. I think that actually expired, and they allowed us to stay on for I don't know how long. And then once both those people, one of them became state senator, I think, and one of them was term-limited out, they didn't allow the city to fill them. That's my understanding. And I could be wrong, but you can check that out. But that's what I kind of was... I believe somebody told me at one point.
We would have had an intergovernmental agreement with them when we did the merger. That's what we did with our sports department too. So I'll pull the file, and I'll let the council know.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Gregory?
No, no, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clark?
Stacey Neal. Stacey Neal?
No, Stacey Neal?
I have three people. Those are the last three people to speak. They were here, and there's a few of them here that have families. Guess what?
Had to leave.
They can't hang out.
All three of them?
I don't see...
So let's just go through the list.
Audrey Curtis?
Who's the next one?
The next one is Christina Ashford.
She's not here either?
Nope.
All right.
Next person to speak is Stephen Seibert.
Thank you, Council, for your time. I haven't exactly been a regular at these kinds of events. I think this is only like my fourth city council meeting, first time speaking, so if I start getting all red and blushing, just know, it's all of you, all right? Now, I'm here to talk about the censorship of Caitlin Weiss and what I see as a pattern of just disregard and disinterest that I see from this council and administration towards the citizens here. I would not argue that Caitlin broke an established rule that we have here. I can understand that. But I would tend to argue that rules like that are not enforced equally. For example, if someone of greater privilege, even Mr. Redpath in one example, came to this council and used profane language, they're not going to be censored. And I think that that's a problem. I think that creates a real issue with public trust. Issues such as, you know, eliminating people's ability to comment on municipal pages is a problem. It limits the public's ability to communicate with the people that are in charge, and we need to have that kind of trust. Issues like moving the camera angle to avoid, you know, the public seeing the reaction from the crowd is also an issue, because again, you know, it doesn't matter that, you know, maybe the crowd likes the position from here because your policies may be unpopular. That's just something you have to deal with, and I would stand by that. But I think that policies like this are ultimately implemented in order to disenfranchise the population from engaging with local government, and I think that is the greater issue that we're dealing with here. Springfield as a city does have problems, and it needs both participation from the citizens and the council to solve these problems. We have massive income inequality from east to west in this town, and it's going to take so many different initiatives from the council and from the citizens in order to address these issues. And quite frankly, it's just going to take a city council that cares what these citizens think. I don't really have that much more, but I'll leave you with this, you know? Every single seat we see in this horseshoe, mayor included, will eventually come up for reelection. And people are noticing the dysfunction of this council. I am not a political actor. I'm not, you know, I don't have any specific affiliation. I'm a normal citizen. I live in Springfield. I work full-time here. There are more like me in this town that are noticing this. So just be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, is that it?
That's all the people who signed up.
All right, do we have need for executive session?
We do not.
All right, can I get a motion? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.